Trying to advocate for community gardening and, you know, using that as a means to get people engaged in active living and healthy lifestyles too. So, I mean, there isn't a, you know, kind of a definitive restrictive area. It's kind of like, kind of open to lots of different ways to encourage
Right.
Healthy, healthy active living.
I thought it was important for the people that view and go back and look at our notes for some of that to come out so people have an understanding. One area if I may suggest that they may look at also in active living is we have a very large senior community, disabled community. So as, as you mentioned, in wheelchairs, walkers, you know, I think of the, the three housing areas we have right now that I would call senior housing or disabled housing for people. We also, of course, have a 37-bed care center and we have many retired people in our community. So, I know for me, I have two parents that probably won't get on bikes anymore, but I'm very proud to say that my father with Parkinson's who struggles terribly gets up and tries to walk every chance he can. So, I think we have to kind of remember those people because sometimes it's not, when we say active living, I think sometimes we get in the glut of thinking about the, the younger, the middle-aged, or
Right. Or people, families with children.
And we forget the, yeah, we forget those, those senior populations and they more than anybody
Right.
Really are people who, who need that to keep them going.
Yeah, and the Active Living Steering Committee right now has a representative. Frankie Jarko is on the committee and Nicole Boestrom is on the committee and they sort of represent those two groups of people and bring those concerns and
Great.
Yeah.
And they're quite vocal.
They are.
I know they are. I know they are. I know who they are.
So, do you, do we want to take action on this right now? How do we want to do this? You could
Well, she's here now because there's a deadline, so.
The deadline for the application is April 19th.
I would make a motion that we support this initiative and provide a letter.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think it's a really good idea that they're, that they're doing this revisioning and excited to be a part of it. Anything else? All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Carries?
Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a little bit out of the ordinary for the way the open forum works, but, but we're going to, we're going to continue with the open forum to make sure everybody has an opportunity to, to speak if they care to. So, anybody else? All right, come on up. Identify yourself.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Mickey Brazil. I've got a couple of things I'd like to bring up. The first has to do with the safety of the people coming into town and the people that live around town that are walking on the streets because they don't have a sidewalk. That, we have some sidewalks, but you can't actually walk on our sidewalks. And I was kind of hoping that there would be some talk about the safety issue with that. You can go all the way up to the courthouse and every basic sidewalk from there down are really not usable. So, hopefully, and now that we're having more people coming to town and there need to be parking uptown because they're not in the parking downtown, there's a lot of people walking down the streets. And so, I'm finding and I'm watching and seeing that that should be something that should be addressed.
Okay.
And something that goes with that is that some of the intersections that are blocked, when you pull up to the stop sign, on a number of intersections, you actually have to pull a whole length of your vehicle out beyond to get a clear view before you can continue because of hedges, rose bushes, and whatever else that's implanted in the right way of the vision for the road. So that, and, so there's a couple of, of things. And I wanted to make sure that I mentioned the same, what's is going on from downtown going out to the point. There's no sidewalk. There's a piece of sidewalk, but it just kind of ends. And you got, that's our only, only real parking area that we have. And it's chaos. You know, you're, you've got people walking down the middle of the street. I don't see how that can be accepted, you know, on a safety basis. So, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is seagulls. Seagulls are, well, we had a problem with beavers. Now, you know, hopefully maybe there's something that happened and that won't be such an issue. But the seagulls are really starting to be overnumbered in our town. I don't know what a fair number would be. I do know years ago that there wasn't as many. And I don't know how they took care of that issue back in the day. I have an idea. But I think that would be something that we should look at as to see if there's any way we can get them from nesting in town and get them to start nesting out of town. And so maybe there's not as many thinking that they need to live right downtown Grand Ray. I don't know what we can really do. I know I, I had a little talk with the mayor recently and so I'm hoping that there's something that we can look into to solve some of that problem.
Yeah, and I looked into, I looked into the permits. So the, the seagulls are technically a protected shorebird, which is crazy to think about, but also makes sense on a certain level. But the, the act that, that protects them was put in place in the 1930s when hunting of, of birds for their feathers, of, you know, like seagulls and other, a lot of other birds for their feathers for decorative hats and all that other sort of stuff was like rampant and the populations were crashing and there was, that was because they were afraid these populations were going to go extinct. Fair to say, I don't think that the, the American herring gull is really in much risk anymore. So I plan on, on investigating a little bit more thoroughly what those permits look like, not for the destruction of the animals, but simply for the clearing of the nests when there's no eggs in them. So, so that
We've had some visits from our local U.S. Fish and Wildlife Enforcement officials
Mm-hmm.
To tell us about seagulls and their protected status. And so, I've got a big pile of his business cards if anybody wants to talk to him about that in my office.
Do we have, is there's ordinance on feeding geese in town, right? Is there one on seagulls too?
I don't think so.
Where is it posted?
I just was wondering, because there was, I was at Artis Point the other day and a lady had like gone at the Johnsons and bought a whole loaf of bread and was standing there like feeding this whole flock of seagulls, which is like, cool, you're going to leave town tomorrow.
Right.
I'll almost try and eat lunch down here again.
Yeah. Make your trout and do your French fries.
Exactly.
They can't read though.
Well, and it's, it's, wait, exactly. It's, it's fair to, it's, it's a fair point too because you're starting to see, we're starting to see some economic impacts of, of the seagulls and it, we, you know, let's not blow something out of proportion to what it needs to be, but I spoke with the folks at the Security State Bank and the reason that they're getting their roof redone is because they're hoping that that will have, that, that the seagull people wash off their roof faster and that the birds won't actually be able to, to nest on a steel roof versus an asshole shingle roof. So, so they're spending a lot of money to, to prevent the birds from being on their roof. And I think that, you know, it's a fair thing to bring up, to say that, that the seagulls are kind of becoming a pest.
Well, we've got so many flat roofs too that make it really easy for them to, to make their nests on.
Right.
And so I was thinking, would it be wise to either have somebody from the city see if they can get access to the roof to find out if, how many are nesting, or someone has a drone that could fly and take a picture and see where they really are nesting and how many that are nesting in wild habitat where, you know, that could be something that could be brought up too and looked at.
Yeah. Well, I can, I can, I can look into this a little bit for you, just to, to try and get, and I would love one of those cards.
Yeah. He was not particularly flexible with the ideas that we had to talk about seagulls. So, I think that your conversation about the law and that might be a better angle to talk about whether that's still relevant and needs to be addressed
Right.
At, at a legislative level because the enforcement people are pretty clear about
There are, however
They're not to do anything.
There is a method for permits though, to, for permits to be able to, to do things with, like, I'm assuming it's with the nests, but to me, that's the, the thing to talk with about that guy.
Yep, he's the right person to talk to about it, so.
We can also post signage, asking people not to feed the birds, you know, as hard as that is. But explaining the problems and letting people know in certain areas, like you said, Coast Guard Point, probably the rec park. George may have people that possibly like to entertain as well as doc side and kind of educating people as to why we don't want them to do that. And something that isn't very difficult and basically means writing something up and making copies that we hand out even, or posting a few signs. That's not really too difficult.
But just having them living right in town. I mean, I'm, it's never been this bad through the, you know, maybe the last five years it's been getting worse like this, but
You're noticing it more now that you live right in the vicinity of it.
Well, no. It's, it just, the roads are turning white.
There's, there's a lot more. I mean, with, with the nesting on top of the bank, I think that's even made it worse. And then the, the immature birds, when they, you know, come off the roof, can't fly and they just walk around and they're, I mean, they get hit by cars and, and people just don't know what to do with those, you know.
Painted red.
Yeah.
Yeah, some
And there's, there's, there's just a lot more of it and a lot, a lot more, you know, droppings and, you know.
The natural habitat for the birds is, is not an urban area either. Like, they should be nesting on the ground, on the shoreline. But anyway.
I don't think I've ever been to a coastal town that didn't have a lot of them.
Yeah. So.
Well, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Yep.
One of the things I just wanted to say, say, say too is that, you know, we should make sure that you have a copy of the
Pedestrian Plan.
Pedestrian Plan that we're, we're working on.
It's available on our website. It's in a draft form. It'll be coming to a city council meeting for their discussion and review and we can let you know about that too.
That'd be good.
And it'll deal exactly with the things you brought up earlier.
Well, that's good.
So we have been talking about those things, so.
Good. Thanks.
And trying to formalize the sidewalks and different paths to get around town, so it's good. Andrew's been working on that.
Thank you.
Thanks Mickey.
Thanks Mickey. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi. I'm Kimmy Burrellstead. I'm the administrator of Nurse for Health. And part of our strategic plan was that those of us in administration needed to come to city and county meetings on a quarterly basis just to try to provide some information about what we're doing, trying to improve our communication with our, our city and county leaders. So that's why I'm here tonight. And, so, one of the things that I guess I would, I would like to share that we're doing, people may or may not be aware of it, and that is that we are now providing chemotherapy services up at the hospital. We started that actually late this fall and now currently, unfortunately, depends on how you look at it, unfortunately, we have four to five people that are actually getting chemotherapy services with us. But it's also allowing them to not have to travel. So we kind of wanted to make you aware that those are services that we are able to provide now, working with the patients, oncologists either in Duluth or actually even the cities. We have some patients that are, are being seen down in the cities. So try to minimize some of their travels. So those are, that's a, a new service that we're doing and trying to enhance and make people aware that, where that service is available. So, we're going to try to be a little more present and be able to share information about what we're doing. And as always, we're always willing to entertain questions and comments from you as well.
Cool. Well, in the, in the future, just let us know when you want to come and then we'll get you on the agenda and then we can actually have a more formal conversation with it. But that's great. I really appreciate that.
Cool. Thank you.
You guys?
Thanks, Camper. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? Okay, nobody's jumping up.
That's the longest one we've had.
I think that's great.
Nice to have guests.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay, so we'll close the open forum and move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda has a typical three things on it. Unless somebody would like to pull something for discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
I have one quick question.
Good.
From Craig Bay in the minutes. It seems to me at the last meeting, Craig, didn't you make the motion for the street and sidewalk permit for the art colony and I seconded? Do you remember? I didn't go back and watch the video. I remember doing the motion for the consent agenda. I think we joked that it was every other one that we were doing. I know. So
We'll check and correct it if it needs to be.
Can you just, can you just check that? I should have looked. I haven't had time. I'm sorry, but I thought that maybe it was
Easy fix if it's, if it needs to be.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, with that note made, anything else you'd like to discuss with the consent agenda items or, well, we have a motion. Do we have a motion second already for that?
No. You didn't. All motion.
There's a motion. There's a motion. We had a motion.
Anti-motion.
You made the motion.
Oh.
Yeah, and seconded it, didn't they? That's how we had discussion.
Well, she, she had a question.
Question.
Maybe it was like a second and a question or
I can second, yes.
Okay, she's going to second it as well. With that note made. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're moving right along, right along to the PUC resolution. So, if you guys want to come on up, come on up. I can give you a little bit of a background on this, but these guys can speak about this with, with a great deal more, more information and detail than I can. So, last year, the, the city council, oh, he's got to open his computer.
He does have to open his computer.
The, the PUC's asked the city to, to sign on to a carbon fee and dividend concept for the, to push for that. And so this, I, I understand is a bit of a, yeah, so this is Resolution 2017-3. And, and this I believe is just, is building on that and, and another resolution that, that pushes for additional visibility of the, how, what do they call it? They call it? The Carbon Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act.
Yeah, well, basically, carbon, carbon fee and dividend is a national carbon pricing policy that the city endorsed by resolution in 2017 and the PUC did as well. And what's happened since then is that general carbon pricing, carbon pricing policy has actually been introduced into the United States Congress as a legislature, as a, a piece of legislature. And that piece of legislature is called the Energy Innovation Act. But it's essentially the same policy, but now it's actually a piece of legislation. So, the Grand Ray PUC thinks it's a good idea to actually pass a new resolution that endorses the specific piece of legislation specifically. And that then that would be forwarded to our congressional delegation so that they would know that this community feels like that's a good piece of, of legislation to support. And the Grand Ray PUC passed this resolution about two weeks ago and we would now like you to consider passing that as well. And I think you've received the, the draft, well, the, yeah, the draft resolution should be in your packet there, along with a letter from the PUC kind of explaining why we think the city should take action on this, why we think it's important.
So, okay, go ahead.
Well, just, just to, why we think that's important is the city has, has, and the PUC as well, has expressed a position of being concerned about climate change and trying to take action to solve climate change. As you know, the, the city is engaged in creating a climate action plan at this time towards those ends. And, so there's lots of things the city can do within that plan, you know, facilitate renewable energy, energy efficiency. One of the things that the city can do, and it's actually in the climate action plan, in your draft climate action plan, number 17C, section five, is, is to advocate for national, national policies that would facilitate renewable energy and energy efficiency. And we feel that the Energy Innovation Act is one of those things.
And the Energy Innovation Act, just to be clear, the Energy Innovation Act, if I'm reading through all the, all the things that are, that are written down, your little one-page, your one-page handout on this, also in the language of the new resolution, which we have here, doesn't even have a number on it because it's a rec, it's just a request for, for a resolution, it's a draft resolution. It all seems to me that it's, that it, the, the concept is exactly the same, it's just that it has the name of the actual nationwide legislation on it, HR, HR 763.
Correct. Yeah.
So, so basically the same thing, but just identifies actual legislation that, that has been introduced so that we can point our direction more specifically towards the thing
Yes.
That, that we're talking about.
Yes, and so, and the idea here is to actually advocate for this policy to our congressional delegation, our, our House of Representative, our representative to the House, and then our two senators. And so I guess what I thought I would do is I would go through a presentation to kind of present this idea, especially to Kelly and Craig who haven't heard it before. And, and then my suggestion would be that the council consider this for, until next meeting. I've passed out a sheet there with some background information. There, in particular, there are three pretty in-depth studies that are listed there, links to where those studies are, so that if you had questions about particulars about this legislation, you could, you could go to those sources and look, look that up. You could also contact me and we could have a conversation about questions that you had Yeah, and I guess I'd just throw out that, you know, Grand Ray is not going to solve climate change all by ourselves. But also, we're not going to get the national policies or international policies or cooperation that's really needed to solve climate change without grassroots support throughout the, the United States population. And so that it's very important that communities, you know, show that grassroots support for solving climate change. And I think this is really an important and effective way to do that.
So for your little presentation, do you want, are you going to go through, go through the, like, what the, what the bill actually just talks about?
Yes.
Such?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
It's a fabulous presentation and I will begin now.
You actually wrote that down? Okay, good. Go for it.
I was also going to say that the city council has probably not, maybe never advocated for a specific piece of national legislation before. So it's kind of an unusual request. And I think that the justification for that is that climate change is such a huge issue and is such a, an important issue for our community and in fact, a threat to our community in the decades to come. And that nationally, we have not been able to get it together, you know, the national state, and to some extent the state, the state has done more, but state and national government have failed to create, create the solutions to this problem. And so that's why it's so important for us to, to do this. So shall I proceed?
Wait.
Okay, here we go.
Hanging on.
Yes, it's coming. That's an ambitious title. I hope we can justify that. This, and again, I wanted to differentiate, there's the general policy, which is called Carbon Fee and Dividend. This organization has been advocating for that for about 10 years. This isn't something that just was created overnight. It's, it's been worked on for many years. Citizens Climate Lobby, there's a local chapter. I'm a co-chair. Rebecca Weenan then is the other co-chair. Pretty neat organization. Their primary mission is to solve climate change and the, the way they think that needs to be done is in a bipartisan fashion. Because any enduring solution would have to have that sort of buy-in from the general And that's kind of what this idea is about. Couple of examples of bipartisan, big solutions to problems that lasted a long time, they're on the bottom. That may seem a little unrealistic at this point, but climate change is a unique issue because it's so important and the, you know, there's some trends that are happening that science has been kind of unrelenting in how it's reinforced itself over the last 20 years. And we are noticing more and more the effects of climate change and people are, are more aware of climate change and the science behind climate change. So I think there's reason to believe that the conservatives and Republicans are going to start, under, well, are going to start to want to solve this problem as well. And as they do, they're going to be looking for solutions that are based on conservative values and that's how the carbon fee and dividend was designed. Again, it's a neat organization. It's got a lot of, it's been around for 10 years, a lot of people throughout the nation involved. In our congressional district here, we have, what is that, six groups, five groups? And again, this is what we're doing. We are advocating for carbon fee and dividend. And now that this legislation has been introduced, it is the Energy Innovation Act. Watch this. You guys kind of understand the science behind climate change again. It's, it just keeps coming. Some charts and graphs for you. That's the basic story there with global temperature and CO2 concentration. The infamous hockey stick graph showing temperatures rising. So this is the 10 hottest years on record. And you can see there that the last few, fairly recent and quite a bit hotter. Another way to get at that, 20, 20 warmest years. Woo-hoo. And this is, again, what I'm trying to get at as far as the science being unrelenting and reconfirming over the last, especially over the last decade. It's not just science, it's not just individual science, scientists, it's also the most credible, well-respected scientific institutions and associations throughout our nation and the That's the United Nations report. Again, the science is coming in and it's increasingly more alarming as time goes on.
So George, with that slide, if you can go back.
Yep.
How long, oops?
Yeah.
12 years.
Right, it says 12 years. Or what is my question to that?
Well, I mean, I think there, there's no specific line or time when certain things are going to happen, but there's a general consensus that the most, that there's still time to avoid some of the most harmful effects. You know, they talk about limiting the temperature rise to two degrees. And if we can do that, there's still, I think that's what that number is based on, that if we can stop it now basically by really reducing our carbon emissions within 12 years, you know, those figures, that's considered, you know, a, a pretty solid step towards avoiding the worst impacts of climate change. And I'll talk about the worst impacts of climate change right now. Because I think you really have to understand this, because this is the push, this is why we're here. I certainly wouldn't be here if I weren't really frightened of climate change. I wanted to make a point that there are local impacts and global impacts. We're lucky, when we talk about climate change here in Grand Ray, we're actually talking about about not the most serious impacts in terms of our health and safety, as opposed to the global impacts. Locally, we don't live on the edge of a desert, we don't, we aren't subject to sea level rise, we don't get hurricanes, and we live in a pretty politically and financially stable country, and that's not the case everywhere. So, here in northern Minnesota, there are certainly impacts of climate change. We know the lakes warming, ice cover is decreasing, that's annual temperature up for Midwest. You can look at it, and then you can also see that it's actually increasing in the rate. Increased rainfalls. This is a measure of the severity of winters, and you can see there that the dark blue is 1959 to 1978, it's quite a bit of cold weather, gets less in 79 and 98, and then it's not even around that in the most recent 20 years.
So, go back to that one. So, what you're saying, that the 1999 to 2018 doesn't even show up on that graph?
Yeah, and that's a measure of what they call a 10-degree temperature season, so that's basically a very severe, or the most severe winter temperatures. So, winters are getting warmer.
Wasn't it 20, was it 2018 or 2017 that we didn't have 30-some days where we were above zero?
Yeah, again, these are averages.
How does that not hit the map?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that's calculated, but I think, you know, the basic point is that winters have gotten quite a bit warmer, in general.
Well, and for us specifically, I mean, what we could do for this is we could just, we could just literally take a look at the temperatures that we've had for the past, you know, 15 years, and one winter, it'll be as cold as silt, and then the next winter, it'll rain three times in the middle of the winter, and then we end up having to have the city guys spend the better part of a week pushing slush out of the parking lot over there, because it can't drain anywhere, because the ground's frozen. So, I mean, like, we're seeing this, like, we're dealing with this, we're living with this already.
Yeah, and, you know, climate change, one of the aspects of it is erratic and extreme weather, so you got to look at averages to really see the warming trend, and the warming of the winters especially.
Well, recognizing that those increases in temperature are small increments, but those small increments, as they add up, are creating significant effects, and it's not the daily temperatures that we're so concerned about, but those incremental increases on average.
Yep, and they actually cause more erratic weather.
Right.
Okay, so again, these local effects, you know, basically, you're looking at ecological disruption in the lake and on land. In the lake, you're looking at species, new species changes, you know, we could have the lake trout herring, some of the cold water species might diminish, there could be different changes there. On land, again, forest species might change, you could have disruptions to that ecology so that there would be disease outbreaks or bug infestations, and that's probably a little more serious, because that leads to increased risk of forest fires. And, you know, I mean, some of the north country iconic species would be at risk. Maybe lose a ski, some of our ski season, which some of us would not be happy about, there's some tourism implications there. The forest fires are, the increased risk of forest fires is pretty serious. I think Grand Marais has an increased risk of lake levels becoming really problematic as well. You know, all it would take is nine months of really heavy rains, if the lake was already high. And again, one of the aspects of climate change is erratic and extreme weather events, so, you know, that's kind of what climate change is, is that things are going to be different. And as bad as those things are, you know, they aren't as bad as these things. So, in other parts of the world where there are hurricanes, and people do live in areas where there are water shortages and dry conditions and sea level rise, there are these effects. And these are the ones that scare me the worst. And the United States military has put out several statements about this, talking about climate change as an exacerbator of harmful events and as an accelerant. The, yeah, the story, or the, well, climate change acts a lot like, I've talked about steroids in baseball, when steroids were being used in baseball a lot, and the statistics, the analysis was that there were statistically many more home runs, and the home runs went much further, and yet, there was never a home run that was actually a steroid home run. You know, you couldn't tell if a specific home run was caused by steroids, and yet, when you looked at the entire season, it was obvious that steroids had caused this increase in home runs and the length of home runs. That's the way climate change works too. So, there's never a climate change, climate disaster. It's always, climate change accelerates or exacerbates all the normal climate disasters that we have. And when that happens on a global scale, it's a global humanitarian crisis, and you can think of it as a systematic diminishment of the Earth's capacity to support civilization. And that's going to hurt, that's going to hurt real bad, and it's not going to hurt, well, and, and so that, I mean, again, that's the sentiment I'm trying to get across here. It's also worth thinking about who it's going to hurt the worst, and it's going to hurt poor people, people of color, old people, young people, and women, more than the general population. That happens in a couple of ways, within wealthy countries like our own, when a hurricane hits New Orleans or Houston, it's the poor people that are going to suffer the most. When southern Florida floods, it's not the members of Mar-a-Lago that are going to take the hit, they're going to get in their helicopters and build a new golf course in Georgia, it's the poor neighborhoods in Miami that are going to suffer. And it's not just financial suffering, I mean, it's, people are going to die, you know, from these things, and, you know, tremendous amount of human suffering. The other aspect of that is the difference between wealthy nations like our own and poorer nations throughout the world. You know, we have the financial capability and the institutional capability to weather these climate disasters, whereas other nations don't. And when these climate disasters happen more frequently and more severely, especially in poorer nations that don't have those advantages, these things happen. You know, so, a hurricane hits the United States, we don't have political destabilization necessarily, or at least not to the extent that would happen elsewhere in the world. Okay, so, we've been at this for about 20 years. I personally have been involved in working on renewable energy and energy efficiency advocacy for about 10 years here locally, and things aren't going well. Just this last couple of years, there was kind of a stabilization of carbon emissions throughout the world. This chart here shows carbon emissions growing. In 2018, they've actually grown worldwide for the last two years, they kind of leveled off there for a while, in part because of the global recession, and in part because we switched over to a lot of natural gas, which is a little less carbon intensive. So, there was a little lull, but now we're on our way back up. What we're doing now is not working, and that is basically the problem. As we try to change over to renewable sources of energy and implement energy efficiency, we keep running up against the same problem, it's just not economical. Fossil fuels are always cheaper, and they're cheaper because they aren't paying for the cost of climate change. So, we've got to fix that, and this is a pretty cool way to do it. The Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. Kind of two ways to go about solving climate change. One is to do what we're doing now, which is a combination of state and federal regulations and incentives. So, that's things like the Clean Power Plan, regulating carbon emissions from power plants. It's vehicle mileage standards, and then it's incentives like the tax credit for solar installations that's in force now. So, we've been doing that for 20 years, and, you know, there's been some successes, but again, it's kind of a piecemeal approach of regulation and incentives that has really not worked. And the Energy Innovation Act is kind of a more comprehensive solution, let's put it that way. So, now we're going to take a look at what that is. Okay, it was introduced last year, I called it bipartisan, we like to, we want it to be bipartisan, it's a stretch. It was introduced last year, we did have a Republican, that's Jeff Flake, in the Senate, and then I think there were two Republicans in the House of Representatives.
There's three.
But three? Okay, well, a couple of them lost their seats. So, this year, it was reintroduced in the House with one Republican co-sponsor, it's the guy from Florida, Rooney, or is he Francis Rooney? And it's not been reintroduced in the Senate, because I think they can't find a Republican co-sponsor yet. Again, because climate change is worsening, the science is solidifying, public perception is changing, we hope that Republicans will start looking for solutions soon, and we hope that there will be more Republican buy-in to this legislation. There are now 29 co-sponsors in the US House, of course, 28 of them are Democrats. And this is how it works, it's a carbon fee. I want to say the difference between a carbon fee and a carbon tax. A carbon tax is when the government keeps the money and then spends it on whatever the government spends their money on. A carbon fee is always a fee that's assessed on carbon and then returned to the population somehow, either through a tax break, or in this case, it's actually sent back as a dividend. So, it's a carbon fee, it starts small, $15 a ton, and then increases $10 a ton each year, so it gradually increases over time. Whoa, that's a factory. So, this is kind of how that looks in terms of energy costs at the top. That first year, it's 16 cents for a gallon of gasoline, that's 1.3 cents per kilowatt of electricity, which is about a 10% increase in electricity costs. And then, $10 a ton after that, for each following year, it's a little less in both of those areas. So, you know, not an insignificant increase in energy costs, but not a backbreaking increase in energy costs either. At the bottom, that's just a couple of examples of, because you're assessing this fee at the source, so you assess the fee at the mine, at the well, or the point of importation. So, the fee is assessed way upstream, where the energy is actually produced, and so, it causes an increase, not only in energy prices, but it causes an increase in cost of living generally, because everything has energy costs embedded in them, right? So, those bottom two examples are, at the low end, a TV would go up about 0.2% in price each year, because of the cost of living increase of the carbon fee. At the high end, would be an airline ticket, because air travel is quite carbon intensive, use a lot of fuel, it would be a 1.1% increase every year, because of that $10 per ton fee. There are only a few thousand wells, mines, or points of importation for fossil fuels, and they already report on their production. So, charging the fee would be quite simple. The advantage of this is it's economy-wide, it doesn't just apply to the electrical sector, it doesn't just apply to transportation, or manufacturing, or services, you know, it's across the board, affects the entire economy, which is fair, fairish, fairer than the other way of going about it, where you're just picking, you know, here and there. This is the other half of the dividend, so the government collects the money, the fee, and turns around and redistributes it to the American people in its entirety, minus administration costs.
Like Medicare and Social Security?
Yeah, right there. Yeah, and, well, exactly. And, you know, it takes a while to think about it, it would certainly be a big deal. I think the way to think about it is, yeah, this would be a big thing to do, but you have to weigh that against the effects of climate change. And, you know, climate change is a big problem, and we're not solving it, so you got to look at the risks of doing something as radical as this versus the risks of doing nothing.
Well, if we do nothing, then we're going to have to be having to do more radical things in the future in order to be able to accommodate for the climate impacts that are going to be hitting us. I mean, our stormwater plan is a story of this, like, how this works.
I think you did that.
So, anyway.
Right, cost, what is it, a penny, no, pay now to avoid future costs that might be more severe. So, this dividend would be a monthly check to every household in the nation, and that's like, in 10 years, it would be about $288 a month, in 20 years, $396, family of four, is another way to look at it, over time, that's the dividend. And so, basically, the way it works is the fee creates a cost of living increase, and the dividend creates circumstances where American families are more able to pay for that cost of living increase. And how, so it's really just a cost shift within the economy, you're not actually taking money out of the economy like a carbon tax would, it's just shifting the costs and making carbon-intensive energy goods and services more expensive relative to less carbon-intensive energy goods and services, which is a good thing, because then the market works to produce rapid decarbonization, because people start to choose the cheaper, less carbon-intensive energy goods and services over time, and it creates a really rapid decarbonization of the economy.
George, am I correct in assuming that the, like, wind power is already some of the cheapest power that you can buy? That's something that I've heard from a number of sources.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is something that, instead of being an accelerant, you know, having climate change being an accelerant for all these bad things, now this, we're talking about being an accelerant in the right direction, of like, lowering the cost of renewable energy and also ramping up its production and its economic impact, because the carbon becomes more expensive.
Yeah, I don't think it lowers the cost of wind energy more, but it relatively, it increases the cost of fossil fuel energy.
It's a true cost of fossil fuels.
It's a truer, truer cost of fossil fuels, yes. There's a couple other aspects of this, just real quick, there's a border adjustment, so that protects US businesses. Imported goods from countries that don't have a similar carbon tax would be assessed a tariff, and exported goods to those countries that don't have a similar carbon tax would be, would get a refund, so that our companies would still be competitive internationally. There's also this little goodie for conservatives, EPA regulation of fossil fuels would be suspended for 10 years, and really, there might be other federal energy regulations that might be relaxed. For instance, the vehicle mileage standards that are controversial, we really don't need, the reason for those is to reduce carbon emissions, but if this passed, we wouldn't need the vehicle mileage standards anymore, because we, this would bring about electric cars and decarbonization faster than the vehicle mileage standards would anyway. cars and decarbonization faster than the vehicle mileage standards would anyway. So there might be other energy regulations that would become obsolete. Also becoming obsolete would be governmental subsidies of wind and solar, because again, if the market is taking care of this, if the fee is taking care of decarbonization, it eliminates the need for those subsidies. And that's kind of a selling point. This particular regulation of the EPA regulating greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuels is specifically in the legislation now. But there could be other kind of ways that might happen. There's an exemption for both of these. Again, each of those is less than 2% of total emissions nationally. And then we'll go through the good things. This is what this legislation, this policy would actually accomplish. Checkmark. Radical decarbonization, I mean, that's really amazing. Studies show that would reduce that 40% within 12 years. Okay. And I'm going to go through a couple of charts and graphs here to show you those effects. I wanted to mention that these, there's three studies in particular that you have information on there. They're all highly credible organizations, nonpartisan economic consulting firms that have done work for major corporations and both Republican and Democratic state governments. This shows the reduction in carbon emissions. The CFD there stands for Carbon Fee and Dividend. And so as you can see, the red line is carbon emissions, and blue is kind of the path run now, and the yellow would be if the Energy Innovation Act was enacted. So rapid carbon emission reduction, amazing. One of the, the supposed drawbacks of carbon tax or pricing carbon is that it might hurt the economy. This particular study and many others have shown that it actually can be economically beneficial. And that's just because you're creating a whole new energy industry. The renewable energy industry is more labor-intensive than the fossil fuel industry is one reason that happens. So again, this study, highly reputable, you have the background information on it, has an executive summary, and there's other studies like it. So that's creating jobs over, out to 2035. And this is a net number of jobs. This includes the jobs lost in the fossil fuel industry, but they're offset by increases in other areas. And again, this is net economic growth. You know, and these aren't huge numbers. I mean, I think the takeaway here is that it's not an economic disaster. There's really reason to believe that we could do this and be okay. And that's just one kind of aspect of it there. Other thing about burning fossil fuels is it kills people. And not around here so much, but more in urban areas where there's a lot of pollution. It's not the actual carbon dioxide that's harmful to public health, it's the particulates from burning fossil fuels and vehicles, maybe power plants. But there's actually evidence to show that there'd be a health benefit from switching over to renewable energy. And I'm sorry, the colors there are different regions within the United States. We are west, north, central, we're the green. But really, you can see that the health benefits are pretty evenly distributed. I guess the east, north, central gets especially a lot of health benefit. They must burn a lot of coal. Okay, the next two slides show the effect of the carbon fee and dividend on American families economically. And this one is, sorry, it's kind of hard to see. This is basically carbon footprint or greenhouse gas emissions by income level, and there's five different income levels there. The furthest to the left is the average, and then the next five are the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth quintile. And then the furthest one on the right is the top 2%, so the really wealthy people. And the carbon footprint is divided into different areas, utilities, gasoline, food and drink, shelter. But what you can see there is that wealthier people have a bigger carbon footprint, and therefore, they're paying more into the carbon fee than lower-income folks. Then we look at, the next slide will show, the green bar is the carbon dividend, which is equally distributed, I'm sorry, again, those are five, the five income quintiles. And the green bar is the dividend, and the gray bar is the cost of living increase from the carbon fee. And again, you can see that wealthier people pay more in carbon fee, but they get an equal amount of the carbon dividend. And so the effect is slightly progressive, in that it's beneficial to lower-income folks. They actually receive more in dividend than they'll pay in higher cost of living increases. The real takeaway there is that for most people, it's about a wash. And even for the higher-income people, that increase, I mean, it looks kind of bad in the chart, but the increase in the cost of living versus the dividend is only like 1.5% of income. It's not a huge loss percentage-wise for them. And again, the difference here between a carbon fee and a carbon tax is in a carbon tax situation, you don't have the green bar. So, and that's especially hard on low-income folks, because they spend a greater percentage of their income on transportation and home heating, or on energy costs. So that's a benefit of the carbon dividend, carbon fee and dividend, as opposed to a carbon tax. Okay, this is, kind of talks about the benefit, again, of that revenue neutrality. We just talked about that. And that's, you know, that's an important aspect of why this is acceptable or good for conservative values. Doesn't pick winners and losers. Again, good conservative value there. That's why we hope that we can get Republican support for this going forward. And it's kind of the same. First statement is kind of a stretch at this point. The second one's pretty solid, and the third one's, I think, true. We have a few things here to go through. And I'll just end here with, we'll talk a little bit about how this might actually be a political reality. Been endorsed by a lot of cities and counties throughout, carbon fee and dividend, the general policy is, over these last, especially five or six years, quite a few cities and counties, including Duluth. But he's down in Duluth.
So is California not part of the US? I noticed that in my letter.
Oh, did it make it sound like?
Made it sound like, introduce in the United, yeah.
Yeah.
He's just the US and the state of California.
You'll do state, state level versus city level.
It's only a matter of time until it breaks up.
That's what I thought. I thought it was Texas that was jumping out, not California.
Quite a bit of business and corporate support for the concept. This was a Republican-led, a very similar proposal that came out about four or five years ago. Couple of Republican heavyweights were behind this. James Baker was also involved in this. He was, I think, in the Reagan administration. This is a, this is not an endorsement of Energy Innovation Act, but it's a caucus within the United States House. It shows at least Republican interest in the issue. And it's, that caucus has grown quite a bit in the last three or four years, up to 90 members now. Canada has adopted a carbon fee and dividend policy, and they're just starting that recently. Most other developed nations have some form of carbon pricing. This is the lone Republican co-sponsor. Florida is especially susceptible to sea level rise, as you know. And we're working on Pete Staubert. Now, you know, in the past, Nolan has been our representative last time this came through. And so, you know, he was kind of an easy sell. But, so Citizens Climate Lobby has met with Representative Staubert's staff, and I believe they're meeting with Representative Staubert himself within the next couple of weeks. Okay, that's my deal.
Okay, so you just threw a lot of info at us.
Yes, I did.
The question then stands that whether or not the council wants to have the conversation about this right now, or wants to sit on this for, until the next meeting, to dig in a little bit on your own and let it process a little bit. Anybody have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, let me just say, you know, when we discussed this at the Public Utilities Commission, you know, we spent considerable amount of time with this information before us, and it wasn't something that we just, you know, took up in one meeting and decided this was the direction we wanted to go. We gave it, I think, careful consideration. I would hope the council would do the same thing. I would suggest that we not just run this, you know, before the council tonight with an action that we would actually give everybody a chance to consider the slideshow that we've seen, take a look at the websites and gather information, and there may be other sites that, you know, you're familiar with too, that would benefit your decision on this. But, I mean, I think it's an important issue, and I think when we supported this as a council back in 2017, we, you know, again, took time to consider what we were asking. I still think the issues are relevant from where we were in 2017. I certainly am going to support this, because I've supported it at the Public Utilities Commission, and think that it's a wise move on our part to, you know, engage our congressional delegation in conversations about this issue. And, you know, we have the Climate Clan that's going to be coming before us, and I think that will even give us more reason to give strong consideration to this initiative.
There you go. So is that, so that's your way of saying, I support this, we should take some time and think about it?
Well, I mean, I could support it right tonight, because I've been, I've had this information in front of me for a while, and so it's not something that is new to me. But I think that for the rest of the council, I mean, it does bear consideration, and I think that that is a reasonable way to deal with this issue.
Well, I mean, we can just straight-up ask if anybody needs, feels like they need more time to, more time to process this.
I would like to have it. If you forced me tonight to do it, I'd probably say no, because I don't feel even remotely comfortable saying yes to something that I don't, and I'm not going to say fully understand, because I'm not going to fully understand it. But I would like, is two weeks enough for me? I don't know, I'll be honest in that. That's a lot to chew on with everything else we have going on in two weeks' time. But I would like more time. That would be my response.
That was my expectation. I wasn't expecting a decision tonight.
I agree with Kelly. Yes. I've been looking into it a little bit already, but I'd like to have more time to look at some of their studies and some of the places that are already doing this, British Columbia and those other places and countries that are experiencing.
My fear in it, in all honesty, and my comment on Medicare and Social Security was more or less facetious, because to hand something off to the government and think that they're going to handle it correctly, doesn't matter who they are, what party, that scares me. But I get that people need a starting point somewhere, so.
Yeah, you got a way that, you know, the difficulty of implementing something like this, and the possibility that it'll be difficult or poorly done versus, again, doing nothing and then letting climate change happen, and what the difficulties will be with that.
Well, and the thing about climate change is we're going to pay the costs of that one way or another, you know, whether we do it in a planned and orderly way, or we do it in some kind of chaotic fashion, which if it's types of global crisis, whether it's hurricanes, or rising sea levels, or global instability, I mean, any of a number of things that could certainly change, you know, things from the way they are today. And, I mean, I think, you know, probably not going to have such a significant impact on me, but my grandkids, their kids, generations down the line are going to have to continue to deal with this issue, and if it doesn't change, I mean, it's, you know, it's only going to get worse.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's, I'd agree with Tim. I mean, I think, I think it's great to take more time, for sure. And, but I guess I, I think it's a, I didn't know about this act. I didn't know that there was an actual bill, but.
Yeah, it's the first major piece of legislation on climate change in 10 years. If you remember, there was a cap and trade legislation that almost passed about 10 years ago. And since then, there's been nothing that's made it, you know, that's been introduced. Kelly or Craig, either of you, I mean, did you kind of get the idea? Any kind of nuts and bolts questions, as long as I'm here?
I don't, off the top of my head.
I did that well? Wow.
Just wait. Well, it's an ambitious effort, but if other countries don't follow whatever lead we might pose, what's the answer then? You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Carbon production is happening everywhere, not just in the city of Grand Marais. We are a minute parcel of the project, you know? I mean, it's a.
Yeah. My response to that is the world is actually moving ahead on carbon pricing and renewable energy development a little faster than us in a lot of cases.
Well, I'm talking underdeveloped areas. I mean, that population, you say it's a human problem, it's a population problem. That's part of the problem, I think, on a global front.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's part of the problem. Let's be real about that.
I think what I like best, I mean, what I like about this is, again, like, looking at, like, different socioeconomic, the impacts. Because if it is a tax, then, if it's a tax, then, you know, if you're lower income and you're paying an extra 15 cents, whether it's, you know, for a gallon of gas, or heating oil, or that, you know, what does that equate to a year? Whatever it is, if it's $500 a year, well, $500 a year, if you make $25,000 a year, is a lot harder to swallow than, you know, if you make a million dollars a year, and, you know, you're going to use more, right? You're going to use more carbon, therefore pay more tax. But if you make a million dollars a year, and now you have to pay $5,000 more a year in, because you're using more, I mean, that's still, they're probably going to be okay. And this system, because it's evenly dispersed, the dividend side of it is evenly dispersed. I just think, like, there's a, there's a social justice side to it, too, that I think is super important. Because, you know, that's the fear, right? Is the fear is like, oh, tax, tax, tax. It's like, well, it's not a tax, right? And it's not a tax, and it's also a truer, it's a truer way to look at how really things should have been going for a long time. It's like the cradle to grave, right? Like, you don't, you don't pay for a plastic bag when you go and get groceries for a plastic bag, but there is a cost to that. You're not paying it, right? But there is, there's a cost beyond what the price of that bag is. There's the cost of the, what happens to that as it floats out into the lake, or as it, and I think this kind of looks at it, I mean, that's different than climate change. I don't know, I think this is exciting. It was a good presentation.
Yeah. And please don't take my thoughts of me saying I want time.
No, no, I don't say that. I'm just wanting to say.
I like to look at something, digest it, think about it, read something, come back and ask questions.
And, yeah, and I would, I would feel comfortable, you know, like, giving you as much time as you need. You know, I mean, that, this is something, this is something that is, like Craig said, really ambitious, and it's also something that, like, the city of Grand Marais can push for. And it's also something that, like, the city of Grand Marais can push for this type of legislation. Or, you know, or we can push for something else. So, I mean, so this, you know, we have to keep that in mind as well. But, but yeah, I think that that's a, that's a pretty decent way of putting it. And we can make as much resource available to, you know, I mean, George has got tons of resources. Rebecca has tons of resources. Shane has tons of resource. We can make those available to you guys, just to help answer questions.
I have no doubt I can look up these in Google. I also like to see the flip side. If one side says this, what's the other? And then try to put some of that together because a coin has two sides. So, then let's figure out, you know, again, in two weeks, it's not going to happen. Am I going to be fully educated in one month? No, but I do feel like I need to look into some things and educate myself some.
Great.
Okay.
Well, we'll do it that then.
All right, and I'm available if someone wants to contact me with questions.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move right along. The next thing on the agenda is, is the housing RFP results. So.
I'm going to give that to Mike.
Terrific. We don't have anything in our, in our.
Yeah, you don't, because this was something that the Planning Commission took on your behalf.
This afternoon.
And they did it, yes, at three o'clock today, or four o'clock today. So, there wasn't any time to prepare any written materials for you. Give you a quick summary. They did receive four responses to their RFP to do some work helping us understand housing issues in the, in the community. All four of them, they considered successful responses. Any one of them would have been usable, would have produced a good product. The price range was, the lowest cost one was 12.5, and the highest cost one was 19.5. So, they're all kind of inside of that price that we've at least conceptualized when we were talking about this. Not that we have a budget that we set for this. They discussed the pros and cons of the different groups and decided that the one that they want to go with is actually the cheaper of the four options. The company is called HKGI. Their proposal met all of our requirements. And just a quick reminder of what the requirements were. We asked for data collection on our housing, including an inventory, numbers, type, the way it's being used, maps to kind of collate all that information. And then a regulatory review where they would try to identify all the places in our ordinances or programs where we're affecting the housing market. HKGI also added a piece at the end of that where they would report on the results of that, which we didn't ask for, but they thought made sense. And I think it makes sense too. So, after that data's been collected, and after they've done the regulatory review, they'll hold a housing issues workshop where they'll present the findings of all of that. And then the next piece, Housing Solution Search, we're asking them to look around at other communities and other innovative programs or policies that are happening to address housing issues and to just give us some ideas before we get together and do a housing solution workshop where we look at our data, we consider our regulations that are being used, we look at other people's solutions, and then we decide what are the areas we want to start focusing on to affect housing, whether that be zoning changes, or new programs, or whatever that might be. And we'll get that done in a workshop. So, their not to exceed fee total of 12,660 was actually the one thing that we were concerned a little bit about with them. We asked all the groups to break the price down by each of the four components and show us their hours and fees and everything else. One reason was we thought we may want to split this up and do some of it ourselves, or hire one firm for one piece and another firm for another. That didn't become an issue at this price range. We think it's probably just best to work with one group. But their regulatory review, they thought would be a 10-hour project. And everybody else was in there between 20 and 30 hours of effort. So, if they were off on that, and it should be between 20 and 30 hours, they're still relatively inexpensive compared to the other four. The Planning Commission did think, well, it'd be nice if we could just check back with them and make some inquiries about how they were intending to do that, and what they thought they'd be producing with that effort, and whether that 10 hours actually made sense. But because they met this week instead of last week, we haven't had a chance to actually do that before it's brought to you. So, they're leaving you with a question of, would you like to, are you comfortable moving forward with this and leaving that as an open question? Do you want me to talk to them and get that nailed down a little more specifically before you want to move forward and bring this back at your next meeting? But otherwise, the Planning Commission is asking you to hire this company to help us with this project.
And you said their cost, their bid was 12,500?
12,660.
Okay. And the highest went up to 19.5?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had two, we had, of the four proposals we received, I can tell you who they all were. One was ARDC, Northspan Group. The other was LHB, then the HKGI, which is the one that the Planning Commission recommended. And the other was a company called WSB. The Northspan, ARDC, and the LHB, those two proposals were, came in around $19,000 each. And the other two came in around that 12, $13,000. So, there are two distinct, different prices, you know, between the proposals. They're all qualified planning organizations. You know, I think, you know, we didn't have any familiarity with this HKGI organization, but their references, you know, seem to be sufficient. The qualifications of the individuals who'll be the leads are their professional planners, done reputable work for other communities. At least, that's, their statement to us is, they've had this experience. And we had had a, you know, fairly good discussion, I would say, among all, about all of the proposals, because I think there were some parts that stood out as being, you know, maybe more significant by one proposal over another. But the bottom line was, in the end, we felt like the HKGI proposal would work and fulfill our needs. It was at a lower price, and we felt comfortable that they would be able to do the work that we were expecting of them.
Do we get letters sent of reference that come along? Is that what we look at, or we actually?
We asked for them to list some similar projects that they've done. And so, they've offered a few examples. Normally then, we would just reach out to those cities that they've worked with and ask a few questions. I'm actually familiar with some of the projects that they talked about, so. And I think for any of those companies, that's the case, that I feel like they, they're certainly capable of doing the project.
Well, you're always going to, you're not going to choose somebody who didn't do quality work for her or didn't like you, that's not who you put as your reference. So, I would expect that. But do we Google to take a look? I'm not kidding.
No, don't, and don't kid. And thankfully, we've got Stacy on the Planning Commission, and she did quite a bit of that.
I believe she did, yeah.
And this was her, select the group that she liked the most too, so.
That was one of the things, so, the way that I view this is that we have a couple of options here. My first instinct is to, is to say, I haven't even seen this RFP. Like, I would prefer to wait to get the, all of the answers to all of our questions, and then to have an opportunity to look at the RFP in our next package, saying, you know, with the note from the Planning Commission saying, this is the one that we prefer. But then the other side of it is like, the people on the, on the Planning Commission are, like, they're very, like, this is kind of their thing. It's like digging into stuff like this.
What I found interesting is that two groups that sound a bit more northern bid in at one area, and two other groups bid in at another area. So, that's why I asked, how do the references check out? What do they look like? And have we just, and obviously, again, references, you're not, you shouldn't put a bad reference. Not all people have. And, you know, did we just Google to see? Because I thought that was interesting, that there's two distinctive price areas. Two are here, and two are right here. What's the difference? So, I just found it.
And I don't know that we could decipher why they were different. I mean, a couple of them had a few more hours on particular components of the proposal, but, you know.
Yeah.
Some of them, maybe their salary structure is different to, you know.
So, so what's the comfort level we have about this? Do we have, do we have a comfort level about making a call on this tonight? I know Tim does, because he was in on the whole process. Or should we, or should we wait?
Hey, if Stacy did some checking and doing things, I would motion that we accept the RFP from HKGI.
Okay, there's a motion.
I would second that.
Motion and a second. So, further discussion? Anybody, further discussion?
I would just say that, I mean, I'm familiar with LHB, and I'm, I mean, I don't, I didn't read these RFPs. And I think that they probably would have done a really good job. They do the engineering. I think that the Northspan Group and ARDC, obviously ARDC has done a lot of projects well. And they've been fantastic too. But I, I guess with Northspan, and I think Randy's gone now, Randy Lasky's retired. But that wasn't that many years ago, that all that stuff. That was like 2013, 14, when that study came out. And that was, of course, workforce housing. But, I mean, I'm sure that there's a lot of information even, I guess, I'm getting at, I think the idea of going with somebody different is good. And especially because we kind of have a perspective of what, what the results of that, whether it's the GO team or the, the Northspan Group came up with five, six years ago, that we can pull to look at, we can use that information. I think that's, I like that versus kind of just asking them almost more for an update. Again, I never saw RFPs.
Yeah, and they're.
He's going to ask for different information.
They're different, yeah, very different, specific questions that'll be asked in this project that were done there. Methodology is very similar in terms of the type of work that's being done, but the specific information is different. Something I brought up at the planning, at this level of effort that we're asking for, it's probably not worth overthinking this a lot. Like, the goal of this project is that we could have done this ourselves, but we don't want to take the time. And so, we're bringing in some professional assistance. Any one of these four groups would provide us with that. And what the outcome we're hoping for is a steer in the right direction and a kick in the pants on, on what are some five, six issues that we can start working on. And they're going to do that for us, so.
I would request as well that we, that we do follow up with them about the timeframe questions that we have, hours invested in each section. But that's really, that's really my only concern with it. I do, I do have a fair amount of trust in the, in the Planning Commission for this type of deal.
But I think, I think, like, especially because I feel like part of our focus out of this is where in the code we can make changes. So, I guess I just want them, want them to feel like limited, like, oh, we only have like 10 hours of this.
I agree.
So, I think like, that's a very important aspect of, because obviously, we're going to take this information to try and make some sort of move to help, right? So, making sure that they understand, I guess I'd second that with Jay, to make sure that, however you do that, whether they say, do you want to look at this again? Or we are a little more open on that up to a certain point of hours or something.
Well, the Planning Commission was, did talk about the risk of the cost being different than what they're offering. And I guess they weren't too concerned about even if it did increase.
Because you have the hourly for that aspect, what that is.
Yep, so, and I, that's the issue. I will certainly bring that issue up with them when I talk to them. So, if, if there's some outcome of that conversation, that it seems like the story's a little bit different, then I will bring it back to your next meeting. And if, if they think, well, no, our methodology is sound, and I understand what they're doing, and it doesn't seem like there's nearly a different story, then you can just go ahead with it. Their timeframe is that they want to be done July, August. So, again, this is, should be able to just move right along and get this done.
Okay, anything else? All right, we have a motion to approve the hire of HKGI for the housing ordinance, for the housing ordinance study.
Not a thing.
Study.
There you go.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, carries. Great, thanks for doing the work on that, the Planning Commission. I much appreciate that.
So, one way or another, that'll be on your next agenda, because we've got a service contract that we'll be approving with them at some point.
All right, so, we got another RFP on the agenda too. So, this one is for the, the RFP that we set out for the City Hall Liquor Store site. So, we received one response. And I was privy to some conversations from other developers that had concerns about the, about the cost of developing in this site, or, you know, and other such things. One of those developers was, was the Art Space Group. So, the Art Space, you may remember that, that name from when we were getting presented to, from the Creative Economy Collaborative a couple of years ago. Art Space is a group that develops artist-led workspace in communities that have a need for them. And they took a look at this, and they, they said that they didn't think that this was a big enough space, actually, for them to be able to make one of their developments work. They need more space. So, that, so that one, they stepped away from. I think that, wasn't it Crosby Anderson had a look at it, but they had a concern about the height and the water possibilities? I'm throwing all this out because.
They talked to some developers. It wasn't going to be their, them as the developer, but that's feedback that they'd have passed on to us.
Yeah, so this is all important information for us to understand in, as we look at this, because these are all limitations to, you know, why we only got one RFP. So, the RFP that we did get comes with, and I'm sure you have all read through this information, but just reiterating it for, for record, includes two different design ideas, concepts for the, for the site, all of which include parking located behind the building, so that would be on the alley. Both of them include the liquor store. So, that, that also speaks to our wondering about whether or not a city involvement in the, in the, any redevelopment of this would be necessary. All of them include first-floor retail or office space, second-floor residence space, and then third-floor vacation rental or lodging space. In different, in different designs and different breakdowns and sizes and things like that. So, a couple of things that they, that they didn't give us is they didn't really give us a concept of what the rent per square foot would be of a development like this. They call the second-floor lodge, or the second-floor units workforce units. So, they're, we're assuming that those are, are going to be relatively, relatively inexpensive units for people to, to live in, you know, as a place to live.
Define relatively inexpensive.
See, I don't know that. But see, the term workforce is something that we've used to, to speak to. An ant can probably say the specific number is 80 to 120% of median, or something like that.
But we, we don't want to speculate.
Yeah, but we can't speculate.
The language they use was moderate income, which doesn't tell you what those.
So, needless to say, I mean, it's interesting that, it's interesting to me that we have, we have a developer that's, that's provided this. It's very telling to say what, what the, what the designs look like. And I'm interested what you all think about it, or what we need to, what questions we need to ask, or if we need to change the scope of the RFP and try again, or what we need to do. So, ready, set, go.
Well, the first thing that popped out at me is they do talk about the short-term, long-term, nightly rent range. Correct?
Yeah, well, for the, for the lodging units, they say somewhere between 200 and 400.
And then under that level, you're talking about workforce. So, now I'm, in my mind, right away, I'm thinking, okay, you're going to have high-end rentals up here, and right underneath that floor, you're going to have workforce units. How is that mixed within the same building?
That's one of my concerns as well.
That popped out at me right away, sort of, I mean, I, you know, in a lodging-type facility. We have nightly rentals, maybe monthly rentals.
That depends, because tell you what, if it's an RN, since here and looking at you, and when we need people, or it's a Rad Tech, those are high-end people, to me, for the most part. and when we need people or it's a rad tech, those are high-end people to me, for the most part. People of character, you would think, I guess we presume. But somebody who's paying a really high nightly fee doesn't necessarily mean that they're of good character either.
Well, no, I'm not judging character, I'm judging value. I mean, if you have a hotel and these units are 30 bucks a night and these are 500 bucks a night, let's be realistic about what you're mixing. That's kind of what obviously popped out to me. And I don't know how they, like you said, there's no number there. I don't know what you're looking at for rent.
Yeah, it does say affordable to residents in the median income range. So I would assume that, you know.
I don't know what median is. Is median Minneapolis a median here?
I'm assuming he's saying median here.
Let's take another crack at this conversation.
Yeah. That's just the one thing that originally just said, okay.
Yeah, what we asked for was a proposal on the site. Clearly, we've got one. But we can't really understand it because they don't have a lot of the details included in it. And that's reasonable because they don't want to spend a lot of money on a proposal if we're not interested. So I think there's really only one question in front of you tonight. Have they provided you with enough information that you're interested in continuing the conversation? Or have they provided you with enough information that you think this isn't gonna work and you don't want to work with them? And then we have to do something different here. Continuing the conversation doesn't mean we decided that we're gonna do this. It just means we're gonna talk to them and we're gonna see, where did these ideas come from? Let's develop them a little bit further. Let's see what sorts of things make sense. If they are interested in this as a private endeavor to do these mixed uses and they like it, you know, maybe we need to let them try that. If we think their numbers are unrealistic and we don't want a failed building on our hands, then maybe we're not interested. But right now, we really don't have enough information to even go there.
Yeah, I mean, my review of it, you know, granted, I haven't spent a lot of time since I was on vacation, but I did look, I think I looked through it, you know, pretty well to understand the concept here. I mean, if there was a possibility that we were, that I would like to pursue, it would be option number one. The option number two with the pocket park, to me, just seemed like wasting space in an area where you don't need a park or more public space to, you know, in the downtown area.
To congregate?
Well, I mean, I just, it doesn't seem to me that that's beneficial, at least to this project. What I did have a question about though, on the first option was that area that they put along First Street with the pop-up retails and the meeting building management office. I'm really a little unclear about what that really is. And the idea of the lodging and the, or I'll call them single-room occupancy because they're small little units that, you know, people, yes, on a short-term, might be a two- or three- or four-month basis, might want to stay in. They're not long-term lodging solutions. It might be workforce housing for international students or, you know, as you say, somebody that's coming to take a job that can't find anyplace else that, you know, needs a place to stay in, would stay until they, but I don't know that that's really, you know, I don't know if that's viable. I mean, I just, I mean, I'd like to talk to the developer and get a better understanding of their thoughts on that concept. You know, it seems like it's a lot of, a lot of people to cram into that space with, you know, they have one common area. Otherwise, they have essentially, you know, a motel room with, you know, laundry down the hall and a living area.
Well, I think you hit upon the appropriate next step option, one, is let's talk to them. If you want to continue the conversation, then let's invite them to sit down in this room with you and give a little more thorough presentation about what they're thinking. And then you can point out your observations to them directly, ask them questions about it. And then we'll see if this is a good fit and if they're interested in investing a little more money in this concept so that it's got some answers to the questions that you have.
Yeah, I wouldn't pursue it until I would be able to get some additional clarification as to what this really, really means and how it works.
Well, even like what the size of those rooms are, you know, I mean, on the second floor, those look pretty small. And they say, like, occupant are housing for one or two people, you know, at the median rate. I mean, those, I'm not good, not good at scaling with this kind of a map, but I'm generally pretty good at spatial awareness. And it looks like
Looks like a dormitory.
Looks like a dormitory.
Like you say, 12 by 12 by 20 or maybe 22 or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, you've got 25 units. You can add up your square footage and pretty much kind of figure out and divide it by 25 to tell you what each one would be roughly. I'm disappointed that we only have one. And I guess I'm, now that you say a couple of the tiny issues as to why others aren't interested, that catches me as well. Because are we not then really as marketable? I was hoping to see something really with a bit more retail. Obviously, they're counting on the liquor store kind of being an anchor to that. But then they only talked about two other shops for pop-up retail. You know, their meeting building, I think they kind of went with what we currently have going on in that we have a couple people using some of our space, thinking maybe that they might need to relocate because they're not going to be in the liquor store. I just, this kind of fell flat to me. It didn't seem to have a lot of imagination to it.
It didn't really inspire me either.
But maybe because I'm hearing some of the issues that others thought are opted out of, that concerns me. Do we not have as many good options? Is this not really a good viable property at this time?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to go out with the proposals was to see if there were developers out there that had an interest and what they could come up with in terms of this property.
Yeah, and this isn't a lot different than kind of what's here.
It's not a lot different than what we drew on the marker board that we
Well, I mean, if you're learning anything from this response, it's that this is not a hot enough commodity to entice multiple groups into spending tens of thousands of dollars and putting a proposal together for you.
So
I don't know that that's a real surprise.
And they're even asking us to basically give them the property so that they could go ahead and do this project.
Did you find anybody communicating with you that perhaps needed more time than the month that we put this out? I mean, would anybody, anybody else on the fence that said, hey, I can't do this?
We didn't hear that right away, but we certainly heard that like two weeks in.
Okay.
So that's another possibility is that with wider marketing or a longer time period that we could get more results. I tend to think that that's not the case based on the kind of specific feedback we got from folks that looked at it and declined.
My other question is then, if maybe this area isn't such a hot commodity, do we want to look at what's at the top of the hill? Because part of our question, which still poses a problem, is we need a new building to host City Hall Liquor Store. If we're still in the same spot, that's not the worst-case scenario, but we gotta operate two businesses somehow and get through some sort of a construction. What does that leave us at the top of the hill? Is it worth looking at that, okay, so maybe this isn't viable, this isn't gonna be for sale, but what does that spot up there, still well within city property, still in a business district? What is that
What's that good for?
Good for?
I mean, if we're thinking about doing a similar approach, I have a hard time imagining we're gonna get a lot of response up there either. What we're looking at is this piece of property is not big enough for a normal-sized developer because there's not much here. And it's too big for a local-type investor because it's still a multimillion-dollar project when we're talking about a building of this size. There's probably a need for us to facilitate the development of this site if we want it to be developed. So we have to be more specific in our RFP about what we want. We have to be willing to pay for some of that as well. Or we have to find some sort of local group that we can cobbled together ourselves that might put a building here. And maybe that's us. And if we wanted to include retail space, then we might need to partner with the EDA or a local private group to try and get some of that included here. But it's gonna take more of that kind of front-end developer work from us in order to make something happen here. The other alternative is we don't try to do more than we're already doing here other than with the liquor store. We just build it for our own purposes. And I actually think we can probably just put that other piece of property on the market and it'll sell sometime. That's lower on your priority list, remember? Like, the purpose of going through this exercise was to try and figure out, is this where a liquor store is gonna be? Is this where City Hall is gonna be? And that's more important than what's gonna be here if it's not that.
Well, and part of my interest in doing this is the drive from members of our community who are saying, find ways to lower our taxes so to drop what we're paying. And I don't, obviously, I can't come up with a dollar amount here, but is this a viable property to sell that would then put it on a tax base to help our people? Is the property on top of the hill? That's part of my interest in this as well is to say, do we need both of these pieces of property? Are we going to do something with them as a city? And if not, is someone else interested in doing it to then increase our tax base? Because that's what people are asking us.
And I think that it's easier to do that up there. We can probably find local developers that'll be able to do some kind of project up there, particularly housing, if not commercial, that we can get that back on the private sector paying taxes again in an easier manner than this piece down here. The other thing that I would worry about is if we move up there without having a viable alternative down here and we try to wait for the market to do it, and if it takes a long time, we've kind of gutted this important block of downtown, and I think that's a mistake.
Yeah. Because I was kind of, I think, I feel like when we were trying to approve the RFP, I brought up what, that this RFP was only seeking a private developer to, it wasn't looking at like, how can we, as a city of Grand Marais, develop this site? It was, do you have interest, your group of developers, to do this? And the good thing is that it doesn't seem like there is very many people that are interested in taking that on. Maybe it's not a good thing, but it's an answer.
Yeah, it's an answer.
So then, then I guess the question is, well, one of many, if I agree with all those points of, I mean, I what are, like, what are the, like, how far, where do you go next if it is the city that then is gonna, we're gonna take this on? And what's all included? You know, we see what they have come up with and this is what this group would do if they were to buy this site, or not buy this site, if we were to give them the site to develop. But what would, I mean, that's a whole, like, planning meeting with Subway now that they're open again.
And that's just to talk about, like, who are we gonna hire to help us? Because that's the, you know, if we're gonna develop the site ourselves,
Right.
we're gonna give LHB a call, right? We're gonna give McGoff a call again and say, let's put the team back together and start putting design work. We're gonna have to invest a lot of time and money in that. And so there isn't an option forward here where that's not on the table.
Yeah, and I would like to pursue this further. I mean, this company put some effort into putting this proposal together. You know, I mean, there may be ways to work with them to address some of the concerns we might have. Or maybe they can explain, you know, what other options are, they might have some other ideas too in terms of what potentially could be done. I mean, I don't think we should just throw it out, you know, per se, and just say, well, this isn't gonna work. I mean, I think we should give them an opportunity to see if we can get answers to questions we might have and see if there's ways that we can make this a possibility. I mean, otherwise, we're gonna be left with a, you know, block down here that either we're gonna have to do something with or we're gonna have to figure, I mean, figure out something. I mean, this building can't stay here, you know, so it's, we either do something or it's gonna be an empty lot or somebody else is gonna be doing something. I just think that if we've gone to this point, we should follow it up with the request that they come up with, or at least it, I think that they should come up and
And meet with you.
And talk with us, yes.
Well, ask if they're interested. I mean, maybe they threw this at us to see, are they really interested? I guess that would give us an indication if they want to come. Where are they, they're out of the cities, right?
Yeah. Well, they'll get a chance to watch this meeting too, so. I mean, they'll have a sense of what your initial reaction is.
This is, like, this is gonna be very informative for them. I mean, we've learned a lot of things about this, about this whole process. We've learned that the only developer that presumably is interested in this is proposing a city-involved, like, as an anchor tenant, mixed-use housing lodging facility that's very similar in size and scale to the one that exists here right now, except three levels tall. And that's, you know, that's good information too, for us to understand that. So I, you know, I agree with Kelly that I wasn't inspired by the proposal, really. But I also am starting to see the wisdom of what Tim's got to say about, you know, like, we should probably see what their, like, have them flush out their ideas a little bit more to see if that's actually workable. And we can reach out to them and we can say, hey, come up sometime, we want to talk about this and we'll see what they do.
And frankly, a half-an-hour conversation with Mary in the EDA office and they'll have a dozen leads of people looking for retail space. So, I mean, there's probably a lot of benefit to continuing the conversation in giving them some tools to make this a better proposal.
Yeah, and I just don't want to be coming back and still looking at this and trying to figure out what we're doing next November. I know government works slow, but I don't think we have a lot of time to just sit back and hang on and wait with this building. That we need to
I mean, I agree. I mean, I think this
Move forward.
This building needs to be dealt with. It's in bad shape and we keep putting money into it that, you know, doesn't benefit anything other than keeps the roof from falling in.
Falling in completely.
That's only because we're using it, otherwise we'd probably just let the roof fall in. We need to be in here right now, so we keep making the minor repairs.
So
So do you want, is that what the consensus is here for the council? That we want to reach out to this group and see what they, if they're interested in coming up to have a further discussion with us?
I guess it can't really hurt.
I would like that.
But I'm hoping they don't want to put us off till August or September.
Yeah.
I assume that because they've expressed interest, that their interest is now.
I'm sure they would like to talk about the project, the proposal. If I gave a proposal, I'd like to have an opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They think there's something here.
They put some time in it and they put some effort into it. And I think giving them a shout-out, take them and talk about it is the courteous thing to do.
We'll see what their schedule looks like and put them on the next available time slot.
Great.
Awesome.
Very good. Well, thank you all for that conversation, that's very helpful. All right, so we're gonna move right along. So all of that conversation that we had pushing the fire department, perhaps, had a little bit of, a little bit of an impact. Fire Chief Ben Silas has an applicant that he'd like us to hire for firefighter. His name is Justin Rexroad.
I would make motion we appoint or accept the application for Justin Rexroad
All second.
For the fire department hire.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think he's gonna be a great candidate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, so TIP. So TIP is also known as the Office House Post, which is also known as the old visitor center, which probably didn't
So many names.
Probably didn't need air quotes, but they got them. So we have a group of people or a party who wants to rent that from us for the summer to showcase some furniture. to showcase some furniture. And, and they approached the city and said, hey, we want to do this for the summer. Can we do this? And so we had a lease drafted.
And we're not asking you to approve this lease tonight.
Okay.
What we are asking is, are you interested in this concept?
Yeah, are we interested?
She's interested in renting it. Should we get this ready for you to go, so you could approve it at your next meeting?
Don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to have somebody using the building.
And she hasn't necessarily said for the summer. We made it very clear to her that it's short-term and potentially really short-term. And, and, but I can't imagine us doing anything before the summer's done, so.
So when you say furniture, are we
Yeah, just what exactly?
Well, it's a whole interior case, case goods. Okay, couches don't come by cases.
She hasn't specifically said. If you want to know that before you are comfortable moving forward, we'll have her come to a meeting and talk to you about it.
I
I think it's probably fair that we know.
I'm just as curious as to what it is.
Does it matter?
I don't know that matters. Yeah, if she thinks there's a market for it, and she's going to pass rent.
Yeah.
You're renting the space.
Yeah.
The lease, I looked through the lease pretty thoroughly, and it, and it seemed to me that the way that this lease was written gives, gives the city significant powers in, in, you know, in it. And, you know, the, the rent rate that they're talking about for that space, 640 square feet, talking 750 a month. Like, that's, you know, it's kind of a gesture at this point. You know, worst thing that could happen is that it's really weird stuff, and nobody goes and shops it. I mean,
And she's locked, the party is locked in for six months, is that what I saw?
Well, that's what we got in there. This is a draft. Obviously, that's open to conversation.
Okay.
And I actually think, you know, as far, from our interest, month to month is the way to go, and I don't need a minimum number because we're getting zero, and there's no usage right now.
Right.
We're not going to invest any upfitting costs in the space. So, it's more about, what's her minimum time in order to make this worth her while?
My, my only question is, is that you're including, you're including utilities in that 750, and if it goes through the winter, I mean, do we, do we incur any additional, I mean, you're heating that
We're already heating the space.
Yes, I, but there's a cost to that, and they would
I mean, we don't not heat the space when no one's paying us rent. I don't, I mean, I don't, we don't do this commercial real estate, so I'm open to suggestions about that.
I mean, I don't know if there's any way to split that off, so
There isn't, no.
Part of this.
Well, and you know, I mean, really, are we going to split hairs over that if, if somebody sees an entrepreneurial chance, has the ability to maybe go do something and get something started?
Yeah, and, and she's not going to be able to stay here forever, so if she is successful, that's great. She'll need another space.
Yeah.
Others have proved to be able to go and potentially move forward on a different property.
Yeah, I mean, this is really, this is what we're looking for when we talk about retail space in this location. A lot of it's been the incubator-type retail space, where somebody can come try something out, and when it works, then they need, it's generating more demand.
Yeah.
So the public bathrooms, we would still maintain those public bathrooms. They would have use and access to those bathrooms.
Yeah.
But they would still be maintained for the public too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, I don't have really any objection to it. I mean, if people, if, if they come and they want to, and they want to do something there, I think that it's, it's fair that that opportunity has been available for quite some time. If they want to use it, I, I don't really have, especially with the way that Chris wrote the, wrote the lease. You know, that way, if they want to stay later than October, which is when we're going to, you know, we're really going to have to start doing heating stuff, then we can have that conversation then. But then, you know, like Mike was saying, if they want to go month to month, I mean, I don't know. We should probably just add
Kind of what I want. At some point, it needs to be that.
What, 60-day notification to vacate, or something like that, so you have a reasonable, reasonable timeframe?
Yeah.
The other question I had was, you know, the, there was, on page two, the payment of taxes. Well, there's no taxes on that building, so I mean, there's very
No, no, there would be. If we're going to lease it out commercially, we will have an obligation.
So they, they would pay that, any taxes that would be required on that, not the city? So 750 dollars, including utilities, but not including taxes, and they would be required to pay the taxes?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this is the, now we're getting into the barriers to us being commercial landlords, because there's a lot of upfront effort here to lease this out for four months in areas we're not very
Yeah, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a taxable
We don't do this.
Taxable property in 2019.
No, it wouldn't be, but potentially
If they vacated and the taxes came due next year, are we going to go back after them to get those taxes?
I, I mean, I don't think it'd be that difficult to have a conversation with the assessor and, and the auditors to figure out what the tax implications of their use is going to be.
Good practice if something else happens in this space.
Yeah, totally.
It's a one-off situation right now.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, maybe this is the time we start to bring in our partner, because if the city ends up being a developer on this site, we're not going to be the landlord.
No.
Somebody else is going to be the landlord that does this for their business.
Right.
Why? It's for another day?
Yeah, it's for another day, yeah. So, so really
Mike has never wanted to be a landlord.
That's all right. We can hire someone else to do it.
Exactly, that's what he's saying.
But I think, I mean, there's
We need more staff anyway, I think so.
The question, so the question right now is, do we want to get some more information from the person who's, who's doing, who, who put in the proposal, or do we, do we feel comfortable enough with the opportunity to, to tell him to prepare it and get it to us? Because this, this lease is a draft. I mean, we really, we have to extend this and make sure that this is, this is mutually kind of, very mutually agreed upon and all that sort of stuff. There's some work to do before we actually approve it. But if we, if we want to wait before we move to that next step, we can. Otherwise, we can just tell him to contact the party and say, let's work through the lease, let's, let's figure this out.
You have to wait. I mean, you can't approve this tonight.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah, no, I'm
Just continue.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I don't object to moving forward with it.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. We can either, like, stop and get more information before we move forward, or we can move forward right now. So, if you don't see any problem with it, then you can just go and move forward. We don't need a motion for that.
We'll, we'll keep developing this and bring it back to you, hopefully, next meeting.
Okay.
Cool. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is for a, is that a variance? No, it was just a request to use the right, use the right-of-way. So it's not technically a variance, because it's just a use of right-of-way.
It's, it's just a license. It's an agreement that's granting a license, that what we've included here is still a little bit template format. This is Chris's license that, that he developed, but there's probably a couple of little things in here that he needs to change.
Thus the Minnesota Corporation, right?
Yeah. Maybe we didn't catch them all quite yet. He's, he's looked through it, and we did have notes from him on that stuff, but it's just not been, I haven't had time to talk to Halversons and everything else. But we have granted this to a couple of other folks in town.
My only question is, why do we have to grant the license to, to somebody, for somebody to use a public right-of-way?
There, well, there's two options that we've used to go through this. The first is, that we develop the public right-of-way as a public alley, and then they're welcome to use it, just like everybody else is welcome to use it. But it's not developed as a public alley. If it was to be developed as a public alley, we would likely want to assess the affected property owners, the cost of that development. And then, people other than the Halversons are financially involved in this. It, an intermediary step to the development of this fully as a public alley is to grant this license for them to build a private driveway in this space. We don't have to build it or maintain it. We don't have to involve the neighbors financially in it. They get to use the space for its intended purpose, but really, they're the only ones that are going to. It's a pretty good solution for a situation like this. This is what's holding up granting a building permit on this property for a house. They have to identify off-street parking. That's a requirement for a new house. And, and because this is an undersized lot
Very.
Yeah, that, which they've been granted a variance to build a house on. It's not the smallest lot. It's a lot bigger than my lot, for instance, but it's still a pretty small lot. They, they do need to show us where the parking's going to go, but we've done this, I don't know, three or
I understand what this is asking for now. We understand where the, the Halversons are in the process of their, of their, like, their needs. So, obviously, this, this license agreement here that we have needs a little bit of, a little bit of brushing up. But I do believe that we can, we can approve this if we feel like this is, like, this is the way to go. And then, and then they can do all of the, the correcting of, of the language and everything, removing the terms that they don't need to have in there, and then it can be submitted to be, you know, as a license.
I'd, I'd make a motion for the agreement to use the public right-of-way for the Halversons after Chris has a final look-over.
There you go.
I'll stick with that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Mary, can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
So, I, I prepared a revised draft of this with a bunch of changes in it. Is that part of what you're approving tonight, or?
That would be what we would be hoping to approve.
I don't know if the revised one is what's in
I don't think we have a revised one.
I don't think we have the revised one, because there still are some, some odd things in this one.
I think what they're trying to do, Chris, is say that the, the revisions are what they're willing to approve sight unseen, because they trust you to get it right.
Okay, well, you have it, so I've already done it.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
So that one. That's what we want. Okay, thanks, Chris. Any further discussion?
Sorry about that. That's what I have.
Well, never again.
Noted.
Yeah, we'll see.
Anything else? Any other, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Fantastic. All right, so now we're going to go to council and staff reports. Craig, you want to start us off?
Um, sure. If Park Board finalized the 2019 rates and promotions, you guys, I've got a copy over here. I don't know if you, anyway, there. That's one thing that they did at the meeting. There was some talk about some of the promotions that they wanted to do with the twilight golfing, the late-night golfing, or into darkness golfing, so they might be changing some language on that, making it unlimited after four o'clock in the afternoon. But otherwise, the changes kind of reflect increases over last year, but the tax is built into the prices, so it's not, there really isn't a lot of major increases, I don't, from what I can see. It's very consistent with neighboring golf courses, Silver Bay, golf courses, I think, like that, so I think, I think this was, some, they spent a lot of time on this. I think we came up with a pretty good plan on the rate increases. The other issues we talked about was, let's see, that was pretty much. Well, oh, the new ghost superintendent was at the meeting.
Oh, good.
So we got to meet him. And also, the other issue that the Park Board brought up was wanting to ask the city council to keep them more informed on a day or date when they're looking at the city garage or the dog pound being removed. Kind of along the lines with the development that's going to be going on down there next year, is that? That's the schedule.
It, that's what people are talking about, but I'm not sure.
And they're somewhat concerned about the dog pound. I think we had this question already talked about, whether it's city, county, joint thing, I mean, where it's going to go.
Is the Park Board interested in being a part of the dog pound conversation, because they want to be a part of it in the future?
I don't know that. They were just interested in when these buildings are going to be moved.
It's more of an issue of, of camper relations?
Um, I don't know, like
Or just related to the boat launch project?
Yeah, I think related to the boat launch project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, we'll certainly keep Dave as informed as any of us on that stuff.
Uh, what else are we talking about? Uh, Dave, um, pre, reservations are up, what'd you say, 17% at this time over last year? So they're kind of anticipating a possible, very busy season. You know, people are getting things early, they're getting lined up early, and maybe it's the online thing that helped them out to book reservations, but they're seeing some pretty good activity as far as getting, getting reservations booked, so that was pretty positive here. Basically, that's, I guess that's about it.
Cool. Anton?
Uh, we had an EDA meeting last night, and, let's see, uh, there was some conversation about the county short-term, oh, they called it county vacation rental ordinance, which that meeting was tonight at six. Or it was the public hearing portion of the ordinance that they, that the county's looking at enacting. And, yeah, I mean, there was just some conversation about it. Mike Larson was there to talk about it. Actually, was on the radio this morning, because Howard was out of town, so I just, Ron had asked about, you know, what this, if that had any impacts on the city, and I said, I sure didn't think so, because we didn't have any part in coming up with it. And we'd already kind of addressed the language and things three or four years ago, or more than that, maybe even now, whatever it's been.
Four years.
So, uh, that was, yeah, I don't, yeah, that happened, and then, boy, not, not a whole lot of other stuff. The most of, the third building, I think, is done down at the Lutzen Project. What I understand is that every single one that's there is, like, rented, which is great. I think there's only one person maybe in the third building, just because they're not quite done with some of the finishing touches, but, but it's already rented, so that's cool.
And is that rental, the rentals that the businesses were guaranteeing, or?
Yeah, so that's, so I think that's maybe part of why they're not fully, their, the rent is being paid. But now it's the transition from those winter to summer transition in workforce. So, once the summer help arrives, then people will be going into those. But I don't think all of them, I think there is, I don't think all the, I don't think all those are supposed to be occupied by, by, really, by the resorts?
No, I don't think so. I just was wondering if, if those first ones are being, being rented, because the resorts are the ones that are
I don't know.
Obligated to make that, make that
That's a good question. I do not know that. I don't know what the demographic is on that. I think that she said that there's only two houses left to sell up at the Grand Marais Project, and that they are putting, uh, it packs out to build two more this summer up there. Instead of doing the prefabricated drop-on-site homes, they're reaching out to local contractors to try and give prices for that. So, if anybody is interested, they should get ahold of Mary at the EDA and talk to her about what's all involved with that. And, yeah, that's, there's probably more important things, but I can't think of anything now. There are just some updates, you know, like, well, Pat Campanaro gave us her update from the SBDC. And apparently, like, the Northeastern Minnesota Small Business Development Council is, like, the most successful in, like, the country for generating what the, what the dollar amount invested is compared to what the return is. And I think the Northeastern District's budget is just over a million dollars, and in 2018, the return on that was, I'll probably blow that number, but it was, I think it was like over 16 million dollars, which seems pretty good. And, and even Cook County then, which is where Pat is participating, the, the number of either jobs created or jobs retained through her work was, I think, 88 jobs just for through 2018 with projects, and she's brilliant at what she does with that stuff, so that was kind of fun to see, like, the breakdown, a little bit better breakdown. She brought my pack, and it was in my, it's in my truck still from this morning, but anyway, I think that's it. I tell, can you guys say something? I think I've
Perfect.
I'm going to be fast, you know. POC meeting today, we approved the, the scholarship awards for the Minnesota Municipal POC meeting today, we approved the, the scholarship awards for the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, which we do every year, high school students submit essays, and we score them, and we have three essays, we gave away three scholarships, a five hundred, three hundred, two hundred dollar scholarship, so.
Pretty cool.
Excited, excited students, I'm sure.
And that's it?
Once they, once they hear, something may have already heard.
Nobody's heard.
Nobody's heard. You sure? Nobody's heard. That's it.
Uh, YMCA will have finance meeting Monday coming up. I did have a citizen contact me with a question about fire hydrants. I did notice, like, how we know, how we address when they aren't working, what our maintenance is. There is a fire hydrant in front of the former Kavlin Funeral Home that has had a tag on it for a very long time. And they were just concerned, and I had a point that, so fire call goes out, they can't hook up there, their house is burning, who's on the hook for it if the city cannot respond to provide the service that we're supposed to, or it takes them that much longer because of, so how do we address those things?
That tag in particular is an indication of our concern that we'll have a difficult time turning it off, not.
Turning it on.
Turning it on. So, the, you know.
It says out of service, on the tag.
Yep.
So, that's what the public sees.
Meaning, you know, we don't want people to, short of an emergency purpose, think that it's gonna be used. I, I understand where that messaging issue's coming from. And, you know, perhaps Tom would like to come in here, Tom Nelson, I'm Water Waste Water Superintendent, and give you all an update on fire hydrant issues, so that we can put that out to the public.
So is that, who handles? I wasn't sure, like, well, we have a maintenance department, we have a water and sewer, and then we have a fire department, so who maintains?
It's water and sewer department is responsible for our fire hydrants. We like it that way, because they're experts on how that stuff works, whereas firefighters are particularly trained. Well, they're not particularly, you know, they don't do it all the time. And so, it's, it's an effort to make sure that everybody there is, is up to speed on it, but we certainly wouldn't expect a volunteer firefighter to be maintaining that type of equipment, just operating it.
They'll go around and test them, make sure they're working.
But they're, they can't even do that, though, 'cause then, when Benny was here, a couple years ago, they did try and do that, and then there was some in the way that which they did it.
Yep. The turning them on and off, you know, when it's an emergency, we're not super concerned about appropriate techniques, because they're gonna work fine and we need them to produce water. For every other purpose, turning them on and off, there's a right way to do it, and anything short of that, and even that right way is likely to stir up sediment in the water system that creates issues for people. So, yeah, when, when, if they wanna have a flushing, you know, hydrant flushing is usually done, actually, not as a exercise to make sure that the fire hydrants function for fire protection purposes, but it's done to maintain the water mains, to, to flush out sediment that might have collected in the water mains. So that's something that we have our utility staff do.
And that's done on a schedule?
They don't have a, a schedule. Our water is not particularly hard, and so it doesn't necessarily create a lot of issues. There are some dead end lines where it's done pretty frequently, but most of our system, that's, there is not a regular program to do that, that's something that Tom could talk to you about. The other thing is, yeah, that tag says out of service, it's actually on, I think, ahead of a, one, one of the heads that we've replaced, that it'll work fine in a fire, but it's just that we don't wanna turn it on, because we're not sure.
If we're being a little true.
If, you know, if it'll be a hundred percent turn off-able. And, and then, you know, what we're not doing now, which is dig the whole thing up all the way down to the bottom, replace the valve, replace the connection to the main, you know, if we have to do that at some point, because we did turn it on, so be it, but in the meantime, that's a pretty big project for, you know, it'll get on the priority list at some point, so. But I understand the neighbor's concern, so maybe we just need to get a different message on it, or, or at least some better information out to the park about what's going on there.
Yeah.
Are there, I mean, are there others? I mean.
Yeah, there's, there's a handful.
We talked about this before, Jay?
Maybe a few times.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
There was quite a few at one point.
So maybe we probably kinda need to.
Prioritize that?
Prioritize that, if we've talked about it several times?
I don't know if we should talk about it several times, but we've talked about it a few times.
Multiple.
It's come up, it's come up just about as many times as there are.
From the maintenance.
As there are hydrants that don't work, because somebody, somebody is walking past one and sees a sign up, and is just like, whoa! And then they talk to one of us, and then they bring it up at a council meeting, and it's like, hey, maybe your hydrants should work. And then we say, yeah, let's do that. And then, you know, it's a prioritization thing, too, so. So we should work on prioritizing that.
Well, it's, it, you know, when you have a sign that makes somebody think they're not gonna get their house fire put out.
Yeah.
Then it seems like a really important priority.
Yeah.
But that's not really the situation.
Well, and, and I don't feel like it's our priority, but I think it's a conversation that obviously we have with Tom, to see how does their department prioritize it and figure that out, because we have the public coming to us.
Yeah.
And rightfully so.
Yep, and he'd be able to answer any questions you have about it, and I'm sure he'd appreciate hearing your perspective on it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so I had two meetings. One was at the Creative Economy Collaborative, they're getting together and, and looking at, work at, look at different issues around the city that could require some, some aesthetic direction, or, you know, like, just opportunities for things around, around the community. There's been some new banners that have been made for the light posts with lilacs on them, and, or.
Those are lupins.
Lupins, that's right.
She's like, lilacs when they show up in July?
Lupins. Yeah, lupins in them, and, and there's a bunch of other projects happening, small projects like that around, the Great Place Project is about ready to get kicked off, and looking for ways that the Creative Economy Collaborative can, can, can help, you know, that's basically where they're at right now.
Not with fire hydrants?
Not with fire hydrants, although, yeah, maybe decorating for it.
Painting?
Let's not.
What the fuck?
The, the Coast Guard Station came up a couple of times in that, and with people asking me, so where are we at with that? Where are we at with that? Where are we at with that? And I said, well, really, it's in the Coast Guard's hands right now. And the Coast Guard guys are gonna be starting to come up here pretty soon to start opening that building up, too, so. So, you know, it's, it's interesting. We, the way we left it, it was that we, we told the, the what-haves at the Coast Guard that, that we're ready to work when they're ready to work, and so, and so the balls kinda let us know what's going on. So.
I think there needs to be, at some point, a public process where we talk about that space, all, all of the point, the parking area, the Forest Service property, the city-owned property of Boulder Park, as a master plan. But that's a big effort, and that's not on our priority list right now. So that's the answer, I think, that's appropriate to people, is, you know, we see that as something that needs to be done, but it's not on our priority list right now, so it's.
I don't think it's terribly pressing.
We're gonna figure out this space before we figure out that space.
Yeah. And we, you know, that doesn't mean nothing will happen down there. The Park Board still talks about Boulder Park, we're gonna talk about sidewalks to the, to the point, and the Coast Guard's gonna do their thing. And, and if they show up one day and say, you know, we're ready to move, then maybe we'll have to speed up our process.
Right.
I don't imagine that probably moves very fast.
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think it moves very fast at all. I talked to a couple of the guys that, that are on the crews out there, and they're, I told them about it, and they just kinda chuckled. They're like, oh, you won't hear anything for a while.
Well, yeah.
So in other words, they're going to be here occupying that space this summer and providing services?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, like, they're, that space will always, well, we will always have a presence for the Coast Guard in the summer here. That's, they're pretty much guaranteed that, which is good.
We just don't know if they would occupy that building, is that what's the question?
Or another, or another space, yeah. So, the other meeting I went to was, was Public Health and Human Services meeting. The public health, county public health and human services is going through a prioritization process, trying to, to identify and direct their energies better. They pretty much broke it down into five or six different priorities, which is supporting young families with their concerns, supporting elders and their concerns, supporting people who have behavioral, like, who need behavioral health services, those who suffer from substance abuse diseases, and then those who's, who need specialty services. Do you remember what the other one was? Kimber was there, too, 'cause I, I was thinking, like, I thought there were five or six.
That's a great list of five you got there.
Yeah, that, I think that was pretty comprehensive.
Oh, dear.
Housing, the other one was housing. Yep. So, so that was really, that was really good.
It's a public health issue.
Yeah, it's a public health issue. There were some really great ideas that came up, some of those are, are direct policy concerns that the city could address. So in the future, I think that if Public Health and Human Services chooses to prioritize this, then I think that we can expect to see them visiting us and asking for some policy, some policy considerations. So, so that's a.
Just 'cause of my former job, I would think behavioral health has maybe become more cumbersome for them.
That was part of the conversation, yeah.
So have things happened to expand services elsewhere within the community, or I guess, do you know if the clinic has taken on anything? I don't, that's kind of what was talked about before I left my former job.
That was part of the, that was part of the conversation, was, was trying to identify and unify the efforts that we have in the community, so that we can, so that we can hook people up more efficiently with the services that they need, because of the loss of HDC and other, and other independent practitioners that were operating in the community, and they either retired or moved away, or, you know, whatever, for whatever reason. It's, it's, I was actually really encouraged to see the types of things that they were talking about and the way that they were talking about it, because I do think that there's a lot of really good participatory, you know, like, cooperation we can do amongst different agencies to make sure that people's needs get met. So, so that's, I thought it was really, was really encouraging to me, so. So there, that's all I had. You guys have anything?
Thanks for the vacation.
Yeah.
It's the last one you get, don't you remember?
Oh, I don't think so. But.
You got used to it.
I'm not gonna lose any vacation time for a couple more weeks, which is a, a very handy thing to have happen. But there's, it was great to get away, there's lots of cool stuff happening here right now, and I'm excited to get back at it.
Cool. All right, anybody else?
We had some streaming issues tonight, so just for anyone to know, I'll upload the recording as well.
Oh. I pulled it up, it was, looked like it was doing just fine.
It was, it was a lot, it dropped off a couple of times, so.
Okay.
It fell asleep?
It's on its way.
I have, I have one more thing. I did have a, a couple of, of citizens contact me and talk to me about vehicle noise. So if you have any swing or sway with those, with the, the handful of high school and other people who have really, really loud trucks, like straight pipes on their trucks, tell them to just chill out, because it's, people are really starting to notice it, and
So, why?
The sheriff can give tickets about.
I was gonna say, why is that not a sheriff's issue department, not?
Oh, it is.
Well, it is. We have, we have an ordinance, a noise ordinance.
So he makes a complaint, and they'll follow up on it.
Yep. So that's the thing.
Except for engine braking, 'cause that's just.
Well, engine braking, that's kind of a lost cause, I think.
It is.
That means somebody doesn't know how to drive.
It'd have to be a lost cause.
Very well.
I don't think so, I hope not. All right, so if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.